That's gone already.
All right, it's six o'clock. We'll get started with our regular meeting and call the meeting to order, please. And, uh, come in. Call the meeting to order.
Oh, I guess make a motion, call a meeting to order?
I did.
I was going to do it between three and four.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Willie's gonna do the pledge and Pam's gonna do the invocation. So if you're ready, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, united in all, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. By the way, just thank you for today. We thank you for the cooler weather. We thank you for the safety of all that came this evening. And we also just thank you for the wonderful time we had on Sunday celebrating our 200th year. And we just thank you for blessing the city. Be with us as we meet tonight, make decisions for the city in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, ladies. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry?
Here via Zoom.
He's virtually here. Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here.
Ms. Alderson?
Here.
And Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make the motion that we add an additional discussion on the gas forward fiscal fixed pricing to the next item in new business.
Okay. Cory, turn it over to you, please. Oh, we got a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Cory?
Yeah, so, um, we learned today that our gas provider, Symmetry, is recommending that we do another forward fiscal fixed price, um, purchase. Oh, got it. Um, and he is not available to be here tonight. We do not feel comfortable, um, discussing what he's recommending. Um, also know, Mr. Davis had asked a couple months ago if we could get an update on your current fixed pricing purchases. So we felt that we needed to bring this to the commission, um, because according to Symmetry, if we waited until November, we might have, um, a increase in the price of gas. So, uh, we want to put that on the table for y'all to decide if you would like to, um, call a special meeting to have that from Symmetry report on those two items. One, the existing fixed price purchases, and two, a recommendation for a new fixed price purchase.
Mike, I think you ask a good question, and that's the reason why I'm recommending we do. They don't have the information for us as of tonight. If they did, we would try to go ahead and do it tonight, but they don't have it. And I think if we're gonna do this again, I'm with you, we need to know what we either saved or lost. And I think we saved, but we, we gotta know that. So.
I'll make the motion that we, um, have a special call meeting so we can go with existing fixed price and recommendation on the new one.
And because it's important that that from Symmetry be available, um, if y'all wanted to maybe give us some dates that might work, we could reach out to him. I know Philip has already tried to call him, and I apologize for the late notice, but we learned this, this fact.
I would recommend we do it as soon as possible. So if there's any way, we discussed this before the meeting, Shifer and I did, and Philip, and my recommendation was try to get it done before the end of the month, if at all possible. And we were looking to do it the 30th or the 31st. Because of a little bit of a delay maybe coming through getting any into paper.
Oh, yeah. Well, 30th is Halloween, so that's what we.
That won't work.
Y'all decide. I'll be here.
The 30th?
The 30th, I think, would work.
Yeah.
That's a Thursday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Uh, I don't think it'll take as long. Once we have the information, we move right through.
Okay, I'm starting.
Yeah.
We'll check it back tomorrow and see if that date works.
See if it'll work for him. Okay. All right. Entertain a motion that we do this?
I made a motion.
Got a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Approval and correction, any minutes from prior meetings? You got two, September the 12th, study session, and September the 17th, regular meeting. Once you've had a chance to review, entertain a motion to approve.
I make the motion that we accept study session in the regular session as presented.
Got a motion? We have a second.
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Awards, presentations, or appointments? I just did sign a, um, proclamation through the county. Murray Alliance turns 100 years old. And it's in its recognition of that. So just FYI. Anything else under that? Completion review of unfinished business ordinance 2024-1126. Again, this is a public hearing and the final reading. An ordinance to require 911 locators to be installed at new residential construction with new residential addresses. Cory?
Um, the purpose of this ordinance is, like the mayor said, to require the locator 911 to be installed at new residential construction with new residential addresses. Um, the non, the locator 911 is a smart LED light bulb that is used to replace existing front porch, uh, light bulb or the light that's most visible from the road. When 911 is called, the bulb converts to a scrubbing beacon that changes color from red to blue to white and identifies the exact location that 911 was called from. If the city believes that this is necessary to enhance the safety of its citizens, the city can require installation of the locator 911 using its police power given to it under its charter. Um, the resolution would update, uh, Title VII of the municipal code, or the ordinance, I'm sorry, would update Title VII of the municipal code. And there have been no changes since the first reading. And tonight you will have a public hearing on this ordinance.
Okay. Any questions for Cory?
Mayor, I guess, I don't know if it's, I guess, a question for Cory or not, but, but I guess my feelings about this, it hasn't been over before. And it's, I know some people have complained, you know, where we shouldn't put another burden on the system. But this is not putting a burden on the citizens. And this here is only due to, uh, new construction. Anybody, you know, that owns a house right now, you know, it's not, they don't have to worry about it. And, and I, I got a, I'll just tell you, I went and bought a light, and I run a designated line from my house to my front porch. And, I mean, I feel a lot better knowing I got it. But it, it wasn't all that much money. So, you know, it's not gonna be no big increase. And another thing people have brought up, well, it's, it's some people in the community that owns this. And again, so, so be it. But it's not, it's not like we're trying to make them rich. We're trying to provide for the citizens to be safe. And that's what, that's what I want to do. And, and that's about the way I, and it's, and it's like this, like I told them. I said, I don't know if anybody else that's got those kind of lights or not. I said, we're not putting it, you know, right at them or whatever. We're just saying, you know, it's a safety item, and that's what needs to be done. And that's, yeah, for me.
Okay. Anybody else? As I told, uh, the radio earlier today, that with Google Maps and, uh, we got Todd and Philip here with the fire department, if we can do anything to cut response time down, it's a help. And this will do that without question. So, um, that's all I got to say on it.
I just, I voted no last time, and I will vote no again because I do agree it's a wonderful product. Um, but I think it's something that should be optional for people coming into town, and it shouldn't be something that we mandate upon, uh, new residents, just because everyone's already here doesn't have to have it. I just don't think it's a fair thing to mandate.
It's fair.
Yep.
All right. Entertain a motion.
A public hearing.
Oh, anyone care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect. No one cared to speak. Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion in favor of ordinance 2024-1126 as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Uh, Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
All right. Three to one.
Three to one.
Ordinance 2024-1127. Again, this is another public hearing and final reading. An ordinance accepting a portion of Magnolia Drive as a city street. Cory?
Breitland Homes, the developer of cottages of Bearwood, purchased property between Magnolia Drive and Cannon Road. During Breitland's purchase of the property, it was discovered that Magnolia Drive has included in the legal description of the property that they purchased. They do not want to own the road, and the city believes that it built the road and has maintained and policed it since its construction in 1989, as far as we can tell. Um, the purpose of this ordinance is to formally accept ownership and maintenance of a portion of Magnolia Drive. It's the portion that crosses Breitland Homes property. Um, consisting, well, I will go ahead and say the one, one of the changes that we made from first reading is we took out the reference to that 17,000 square feet, because we're not sure if that's accurate. We now have a legal description that is accurate, and we have included a signed deed from Breitland Homes to the city as an exhibit to the ordinance. Um, the deed is already included in your packet. Um, because accepting this road would change the city's roadmap, which is part of the zoning ordinance, the planning commission reviewed this proposal. The planning commission held a public hearing and recommended that the city accept this portion of Magnolia Drive. Um, the planning commission's resolution is included in your packet, uh, but it's not part of the ordinance. Um, tonight you'll have a public hearing on this ordinance.
Any comments from the commission? Mike?
Mayor, I mean, it's, to me, it's just simple. I mean, you know, the road was already there. It was ours. And that would be like, uh, us telling, I guess, John King on his property on, what is that, Lezard, Cross Bridge Road? Yeah. So it'd be like us saying, no, you're gonna be responsible for that. So you can't do that. I mean, it's already there.
We've been taking care of it since, what did you say, 80 something?
89. It, it's very bizarre that we can't buy it.
No, it's not. I'm sorry.
We built it, though. That's.
That we built it. That's right.
Anyway, but I agree.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect. No one did. Entertain a motion for approval.
I make the motion we approve ordinance 2024-1127, accepting Magnolia Drive as an official city street of Mount Pleasant.
Got a motion? We have a second. Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Ordinance 2024-1128. Again, this is a public hearing and the final reading. An ordinance amending zoning and land use control for a piece of property located on North Main Street here in town, and it is 16.30 acres. Cory?
The purpose of this ordinance is to rezone this property, uh, on North Main Street from Highway Commercial to Light Industrial. The complete, the planning commission held a public hearing and then recommended this rezone. The planning commission found this location would support the zoning of Light Industrial because it was in an industrial area, and that it would not have an adverse effect on adjoining landowners. Planning Commission passed a resolution that includes their specific findings of fact. The planning commission resolution and its findings are included as an exhibit to your ordinance. At first reading, this board passed the resolution with the following findings of fact to be included in the ordinance. It is, it is in agreement with the land use plan for the area because there are already industries in the area, no adverse effect on adjoining landowners because an upgraded use of the property benefits the community. It does not benefit one person more than others. The area has not changed, but it has always supported a light industrial use. Again, tonight you'll have a public hearing. The commissioner's findings, your findings from the first reading have been included in the ordinance for second reading. Um, you may change those findings or adopt them as presented in the ordinance after the public hearing.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the commission?
Uh, I'm on the planning commission, and we had no one that was there to object to it.
Okay.
That's fine.
And the applicant is here.
Yes. Or the, what will be the new?
Oh.
Anything else from the commission?
Is it okay to go, I guess, just like what you said, from the, from our first reading?
Yeah, you can accept the ones that you already, um, stated that I just read, or you can change them if you feel like you need to make a difference.
Good.
Good.
Very good. All right, this is the public hearing. Anyone care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect. No one cared to speak. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the 2024-1128 as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from mayor. Uh, Sunday's bicentennial event was, uh, very nice. I'd like to publicly thank, uh, Jennifer and Haverly for all the work they put into it. The goodness gracious Sherri and Dave Cook at the museum, a lot of work they put in on it. Um, couldn't ask for a better afternoon. It was beautiful. Music was great. And the cake was good.
It's heavy pork.
And, um, so it was a, a good event. I'm a little early probably telling this, but the tree lighting is set for Saturday, November the 30th at the library at 6 o'clock. And then the, uh, library is also having a Polar Express in which they're gonna have food trucks and everything on November the 2nd from 10 to 12, just for everybody's information. That's gonna be a real Ken Finley event.
No train ride?
No. So that's all I got. Monthly financial budget report.
I don't have a lot, um, to report this month. Um, property taxes is our biggest thing. I think that's going on right now. Everybody should have received their notices from the state, um, a couple of weeks ago. So property taxes are starting to come in. The general fund, if you guys have looked at the profit and loss statement right now, general fund is in a deficit, which is normal. This is our lowest, um, time for our general fund, just because September usually is the, the lowest cash amount that we usually have in our general fund. Um, so hopefully property taxes, like I said, have started coming in already in October as people receive notices. So we've already collected about 50 or 60,000 in property taxes in two weeks. Um, so as we go through, of course, the due date is February 28th. That's the last day all over state of Tennessee. So, um, around that time is we usually need to have 100% of them. escrows usually come in between December and January, so that's when we really see a bulk of it, as well as all the escrow payments. Um, other than that, um, oh, yeah, we received our budget award, finally came in from the state, and, uh, we were really happy about that. And that's pretty much most of it. Audit is continuing, and so we're moving along.
Any questions for Shifer? She's doing a great job.
Thank you.
Yes, she is.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve her report.
I make a motion that we accept the financial budget report as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Philip, report from city manager.
Mayor Commissioner, I've got, uh, four or five things here. Feel free to stop me at any time. Um, the first one is the downtown project. The scary, the square is scheduled to be closed on October 28th for demolition. I met with, uh, staff today, Chief Hay, working on, um, a plan for access. Um, I do have some handouts to give you. I can wait after the meeting. I don't think you got it up there. I was gonna show you, but basically gonna advertise, um, on Main Street. I was behind, sorry. Um, so you, as you can see there, gonna advertise coming in, making the one-way street a two-way street, and then access to our parking lot. And then as far as accommodations and handicap, we're gonna figure that out and then probably put some signage up. Uh, if you need assistance, give us a call, and we'll try to navigate the best we can. So that's, uh, for the downtown project, because demolition, and that could change. We give us a couple of dates, but that's the closest slate for this month.
Now, the parking right in front of City Hall is gonna remain open during this, right?
We looked at the plans today. I don't, it may for a little while, but it can't.
Don't think so.
Not very long. I don't think so. They're taking it all out.
Are all the trees and all that staying or, or?
The only thing that, that I think I seen on the plan, the monuments, is the only thing that's staying. Everything else is, no.
Fountain's going in.
Are you gonna take up the trees where somebody can get them? Or we just gonna cut them down?
I think we're gonna cut them down.
Okay.
Yes, in the plan. Yes, sir, I think they're just coming down.
And nice trees that somebody.
Um, everybody good with that one? So next, uh, we did get an email, uh, today about the, uh, bridge closing. It is slated for November 18th, uh, and reopening fall of 2025, so a little longer, uh, than they originally told us. Uh, I did reach out to T-Dot and talk to the representative. Uh, basically, what they told me is it's been procured, and we can't change that. So, uh, so again, that's another topic that, uh, has been ongoing, but there's an official date there when they're gonna shut it, and the whole bridge is being closed.
What you mean, a date you can't change? What you talking about?
As far as, there was discussion a year or so ago when they asked us, would you want to do it all at one time or one lane? And the timeline back then was six months if you take the whole thing out, um, 18 months if you do it in one lane.
Right.
So, uh, from our perspective, from the fire department, even Chief Hay from police department, we did some time analysis, and it, it was the same. Not the same, but when you're looking at it, so our recommendation was, let's get it done in six months. Well, through the last year or so, the whole process has changed. So now it's about 11-month project to taking the whole bridge out. Uh, I did call because there's been some concern about, uh, that may affect business owners, and is there anything that we could do? But it's too, everything has been procured, um, products have been ordered, and there's no change at this point.
So we couldn't go back to the red light, the one lane, if they making it longer?
Yes, that could do. Yeah. Mike?
But a lot of that is, I guess, our own fault. I guess if we'd have done something first of the year, you know, maybe they could have done that. But we kept putting it off, and they kept putting it off. So I guess now can't, can't nothing be done. But I did have some people to call me about it, you know, and, and some people are even worried about, I guess, it's gonna put this, I don't know if it will or not, but it, it very well could. It could put, put the more school buses out on the bypass. And I don't, I just, you know, I'm, they ever go again with safety concerns, you know? Uh, I just don't, and I don't know. You know, if maybe we could, I mean, it's not being put off. I understand it's not being put off. But maybe our elected officials need to maybe at least rethink this. I, I, you know, I understand what you're saying, you know, it's, but, I mean, I don't know what, you know?
Yeah.
I'm just saying what some of the.
Well, I was, I was in attendance at that first meeting, and they told us very clearly at that meeting that it would be five to six months if we did this.
Right. Um, and that was several, I don't know how long ago, a year, 18 months ago when we recovered this. It's, obviously, things changed, and we took them for what they told us at the time.
Yeah.
And made a decision based off that. Um, but I, I do believe since that time, I was really, the procurement process started for the state, uh, from my position and level, I, I can't do anything about it. If you wanted to from an elected official, reach out, uh, with a letter or something. I don't know if that goes anywhere, but.
And the other thing we discussed is today about this as well, is that is a state highway.
And we don't even have jurisdiction.
We don't even have jurisdiction of it. That's why if we get ready to shut down Main Street out here, we got to pile everything in the world with them, because that is a state highway.
It is a state highway. Again, you know, I say something. I guess I forgot. Uh, but I think the state would listen. I mean, I may be totally wrong, but I believe they would listen.
Well, they didn't want to today.
Well, I can understand the reasoning behind it.
So it is, I, I, I'm gonna make a phone call, but again, it's, we don't have any jurisdiction of it.
Did they give an explanation of why it increased that much time?
No, we didn't.
And it could be longer than that.
Right.
Could be sooner.
Could be sooner. Trying to look at the bright side of it. It could be sooner, but.
I just think that, I know nothing we can do, but since they gave us around a ballpark figure of six months, and then they stretched it out longer, then I think we should at least have the option to go back and say, well, let's do a one-lane bridge for our business. They're still here, but like Bill said, it is a state highway, but I just think it's unfair to our business owners for that long at the time, when they told us six months that we shut it all the way down.
Well, I would encourage everybody to do the same. I'm gonna do. I'm gonna make a phone call.
Just give us the number and call.
I will.
Yeah.
I'll ask Shifer or somebody to send that air, Philip, tomorrow, once we get that done. Mike?
Mayor, I'd just like to say one more thing. And remember, when they took the bypass around Mount Pleasant, which is 43 now, this is 243 North Main coming down. Remember how we lost all our businesses? Everybody wanted to blame it on the plants or whatever, but it really wasn't the plants. It was the, all the traffic coming around town. And this here could end up the same way. You know, I mean, it could. It could end up the same way, you know, people leaving. It's hard to bring them back.
Yeah, it's unfair to our business for them to go that longer without, you know, and we didn't tell our business people that long. I just think it's unfair for us, them to do us like that, and we can't go back and change our mind.
But like I say, I think some of it was our own, our own thought. I really do.
I'm sorry, I don't see that part of it, because it is a state highway.
I don't. The state asked us, Bill.
And we agreed to do six months, Mike.
No, no. Bill, we went.
Yes, we did.
We went back and talked about this, and, and the state says, we can do it in six months, or we can put a light there and do it in a year.
No, it was 18 months.
But if they double the six months, they've doubled the year and a half.
They doubled the year and a half to two, two and a half.
Well, anyway, I don't know what I'm talking about, so we don't.
Philip, next.
Yeah, so, uh, I sent you guys an email today with, uh, like our leak survey. So, uh, if you get a chance, look at your emails, but they have finished that, um, and we're not gonna bring them back this year. It'll come back next year, but total of 103 leaks, estimated at 326 gallons per minute, and, uh, utility crews have worked through about half of them, and they're still working hard towards that. Uh, if you get a chance, check that document. It's pretty impressive.
Yeah, it is.
Um, next, um, there's been a lot of discussion on East Merchant.
Mike?
Sorry.
I would just like, again, you know, say, thank y'all for doing this right here. It, it really means a lot to the city as a whole.
And it's made a difference.
Yes. I just, you know, me personally.
What you got?
Yes, sir. So, um, back when we did the borrowing from the gas and some of the projects for parks and streets, uh, we were under pressure that East Merchant Street was part of that. So I've started those bid documents. Um, you will have to approve that once we get those bids back, but that's fixing the existing drainage and paving approximately 700, uh, feet of, of the road. So.
Good.
Uh, hopefully, uh, we get those out in maybe next month's agenda for approval for that.
Good.
Next thing I have, uh, there has, and I sent this in an email today with some pictures. There's been some vandalism at our parks again, um, Arrow Mines picnic tables. We found Rotary Park today, uh, vandalism picnic tables. So those pictures are in your email. Um, one of the things that we have done, or we're doing, is putting cameras in parks. So that is one thing moving forward. Wow, there, there wasn't a rest made on Arrow Mines. So, um, just know that that's there, and it's going on. Yes, sir.
Uh, the cameras we putting up, I mean, I, I don't wanna spend good money in it, you know, but are you gonna be able to recognize an individual, you know, through these cameras, or will these here just be cameras, and they're just a figure?
So we are utilizing a grant, matching a grant for that. Um, I would refer to IT on that, or even with, uh, Jack and Michael, the police department. But I do believe they're good quality cameras, and we will be able to identify.
Okay.
You think y'all want that, guys?
The cameras we have up now.
Come up front, Michael, please.
At like the community center, uh, we have been able to identify individuals.
That's good.
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 They in high of things.
That's money I don't, I don't spend.
So that camera in your office, you could see it from there, or be?
I can see, all the cameras that the city has, uh, I can see in my office.
Okay.
And you can go back and bring them up and view them and all that?
I can. If it's in between times, Michael Hayward has to help me, 'cause I forget.
All right.
Appreciate it.
This is what, this is what we've got. This is what I've got in my office.
Oh, okay. That's good.
Good deal. Thank you, Michael.
Oh, okay.
Appreciate it.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, moving on, just giving you guys an update on the Arrow Mine, Arrow Mine, uh, park bathroom. We have, um, contacted with roads engineering. He's doing the construction documents. As soon as it's done, we'll put it out to bid and hopefully get that going. Yes, sir.
Only, only other question I got, I guess the person that's been arrested for, I assume he will be held responsible and have to replace?
Chief Hay, come up again, please.
I'm sorry.
I guess, Chief, what I asking, you know, the person that's been arrested, is, is he gonna be held responsible to replace him?
Uh, he will be held, uh, for financial reasons, but he probably will never pay it back. I can tell you.
A teenager?
No.
Okay.
No. What a shame.
No, not a teenager.
So hopefully the judge.
We don't know if he was the same one that did the one that we found today. We don't know if he was the same one that did the one that we found today because he doesn't usually venture over to that.
Okay.
Hopefully the judge will take care of it.
Well, I mean, the judge will, will probably say, you know, you have restitution to pay to the city, but that didn't.
Don't serve no time for it or nothing.
Ah, it's up to the judge.
Thank you, Jim.
Bill? So just talked about aero mines and the construction documents, we get that. Next one, and I did put this on the parks board this past week. Rotary Shelter is probably, it is one of our biggest shelters. It's in need of a roof badly. So I partnered with Rotary and us to replace that roof. Yes, sir.
I'd like to go back to this question again. But how much are these cameras going to cost? But I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if there's nothing that we can do about it, you know, I don't know.
I don't.
I don't know what's the use of putting cameras there if can't nothing, you know, if somebody decides they don't want to pay for them. And the judge says, well, just walk away.
We can get, Michael Hayward can get the pricing, I can get an email to you all, but this is the PEP grant. Our insurance company every year gives us a 50% match grant. And over the years, Michael has actually, that's been our project is to add cameras to every one of our facilities. So our liability insurance that we have for our property insurance that we have for all of our buildings, all of our vehicles, liability insurances, auto, all of that stuff comes from PEP, public entity partners. And they give us security, safety and grant. And I cannot remember, I believe the grant is up to $6,000 or $8,000 and we match it 50%. That is not just for cameras. Of course, they give us guidelines of what we can buy to improve safety and security at these buildings to prevent claims. So that's the other part of it that we may not have discussed yet is when something like this happens, we do file claims with our insurance company. One thing is they want us to have these cameras at all these locations to prevent those claims. But at the same time, when we do have a claim, we do submit it to them. And if the amount of the claim is higher than the amount of the deductible that we have to pay, they end up paying it. Otherwise, we just find it out of our pocket, which in this case, I have not looked at the pictures, I was at a training for two days. But if it is the benches that we did at Gardenia Park were $3,000, so are usually our deductibles a thousand. So if that's the case for these benches, if there's more benches or whatever, then we may end up having a claim with the company as well, so. But is that 50%? And, and we can get you all the pricing on the cameras, but that's been something that the grant requires us to do. Our insurance company wants us to do that, is have camera that every one of the buildings to prevent these type of claims.
I'm not, I'm saying it's a good thing, but I just don't want to spend money that could keep.
And, but because it's a grant that requires to only do certain things, we can only use it for certain items like fences and security items around the building.
I personally, you have, you explain to me, you're explaining to good enough for me.
We, we've solved many crimes with the cameras at the city.
Yeah.
We've solved, not just one, we've solved many, yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're a great asset.
Well, and this time it's a picnic table, next time it could be a person.
That's right.
So what price do you put on that?
Yeah, it's going to cover the whole park.
Yeah, and it's getting dark and I walk, you know, I mean, it's, you want to know that those cameras are out there.
Yes. Anything else, Phillip?
And the last thing, I will be in Chattanooga from Tuesday to Friday next week at the city managers conference.
Have fun.
Who am I going to call?
Who am I going to? Special reports from other departments, wastewater liaison.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, someone hit the highlights of the wastewater treatment plant. Basin number one rehabilitation almost fully complete. Magical electrical gear installation is startup complete. Blower system installation is startup complete. MBR setup activities are anticipated start next month. One thing I'd like to add that you probably didn't have your packet, tentative completion date is December. However, BH Craig, our contractor, is past substantial completion date. Cory and I met with the engineers this week and I'm going to kind of pass that over to her, talk about what that means.
So this is for the wastewater treatment project, this is the one that is $13 million. BH Craig is the contractor and like Phillip said, they are past their substantial completion date. So we consider that to be a violation of the contract. That delay will cause the city to incur additional engineering costs because this is a USDA funded project. USDA requires that we have engineers oversee this project while there's construction ongoing. So we will have to pay Barge to oversee this additional time, which is outside of what we originally budgeted and paid them. There is a liquidated damages provision in the contract with the contractor for this type of. It's a thousand dollars per day. So we will be recommending that you all enforce that provision. We've already notified through the engineers, BH Craig, to let them know that you'll have that option. And we are supposed to hear back from Barge probably this week or next week with an expected completion date, which we anticipate would be by the end of the year. So hopefully the liquidated damages will offset what you would have to pay additionally to Barge.
How many days ahead of them now and they're paying?
They, the clock started to run on, I think September, or, sorry. Clock started to run on July 14th.
Okay.
Do we have any idea what we're talking about?
It's all just part. I think they're estimating, so they're almost at the completion of their contract they had. They're typically around about about $30,000 a month is what they've been billing us for all the services associated with that. But like Cory said, I think this is almost an offset to cover our indirect costs because they don't complete them.
And that's what, when they, you know, Barge helped us draft the contract. And so when they set that liquidated damages amount, they did a calculation of what it would cost them. So it, it's supposed to match. And they're really, we, we try to think of what other additional like fees we could have and that feeling like, yes, sir.
It's your job.
Right.
Well, that's why you put those, that's why you put those in contracts.
Right.
Particularly in today's time with supply line issues that you got, it's, we can't control it.
And just for our knowledge, Barge is going to itemize their time.
Good.
So we'll have that and they're going to bill it separately so we have a documentation of this whole trail.
Good. Gas system.
Mayor Commissioners, we had already talked about the fixed prices and tried to schedule me for that. Discussions continue with engineers, how to provide additional gas to industry. Some of the things, they're, they're looking at our model and also there's some data logging here in the near future to try to meet some of those requests.
Good, 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 good. All right. New business, resolution 2024-34, resolution regarding the purchase of real property located at 115 Colombian Avenue in Apple Tree, Apple Tree Street. And for everybody's information that maybe has not heard this, this is property that joins our current public work facility. So the purpose of this would be so when we need to the expansion and we need it now to park one truck in particularly. And this will give us opportunity to add. Cory, anything you want to add to that?
No, just the purpose of this resolution is to allow the city to enter into the contract. It is, it would be a portion of a property. I think Phillip showed you a picture at the study session, but it basically cuts the rectangle in half. The undeveloped part would be the part that you would be purchasing. The part, one of the contract terms is that if you enter into this contract, we will have five days to commission a survey to go ahead and survey that property. And both the city and the seller would have to agree with that survey before we can move forward. The purchase price is $40,000. And it also gives Phillip the ability to approve that survey without having to come back to y'all. And that's the contingency of a contract.
Any questions? Mike?
Is it negotiable? I think like Commissioner Willie brought up on the park. You know, where the guy was, I keep remembering how much he was wanting. And well, y'all put a lesser price and ended up getting a lesser price?
I don't know, the, the purchase, the purchase price that they have signed is 40,000. So if y'all were to ask for a different price, you would kind of, you would be counter offering and they'd have to come back and agree to that. So I, answer is I don't know, I've not talked this deep though at all.
Any other comments from the commission?
We need it.
Yeah, we need.
We've saved a lot of money for a vehicle that needs to be covered.
Needs to be covered. That is, yes, and it is saving us an enormous amount of time and money.
Mayor Commissioner's just adding, Sheri can add, but as far as how we split that, I know we talked about some of the general fund as well, not just utilities because it would be housing that VAC truck that works for all of the departments.
Correct.
Well, you got to take care of that, costs us a lot of money.
Yep. Anything else? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve resolution 2024-34 as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Thank you.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2024-35, a resolution by the city declaring certain Mount Pleasant Police Department and Fire Department inventory as surplus.
Y'all done this several times, but this is just declaring two Dodge Chargers as part of the property.
And the 2013, sorry. Sorry, Tori.
Any questions, comments? You can entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we accept resolution 2024-35.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution 2024-36, a resolution authorizing the city to accept funds from the Tennessee Safety Office Grant Program.
The purpose of this resolution is to accept these funds. This is standard, something that you always get, but you don't always do it by resolution. We decided there was no harm in putting this in front of y'all. But the Tennessee Highway Safety Office provides grants to programs which are designed to reduce the number of fatalities, injuries and related economic losses resulting from traffic crashes on Tennessee roadway. The amount of the grant is $9,958, there is no match. The funds are awarded to and will be used by the police department. Nine, $1,950 is for overtime pay and about 8,000 is for radars for the new Durango.
Okay. Any questions? You can entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve resolution 2024-36 as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We had no one sign up to speak. Any of the commission got anything else they'd like to add before we adjourn?
Yeah, I would just like to thank our staff, our police department, our fire department, whoever was involved in the little accident that happened out there a little bit. I got good feedback that y'all did a wonderful job. When I went out there that same night, they were just praising how good of a staff we have here in Mount Pleasant. So I just want to say as a commissioner, I thank each and every one of you for telling that, make sure everybody was safe. I did outstanding job, is what I heard, so thank you.
Anybody else?
Goodness, remember, election time.
Right. I, I, I was, I met two of the displaced families. Sunday afternoon from this accident, it was horrible and I could not thank the police department and the fire department just as a whole, for what all y'all did. I mean, thank y'all very, very much. It was, they were touched. And this, they were, they were out of hats.
Yes.
So I, I just want to thank you. Entertain a motion, we adjourn. Got a second, all those in favor? Everybody have a great evening, got to stay warm.